Okay. Um, this is the historic district commission town of Fairfield. Today is November 19th, 2025. Notice of this public hearing was published on the website. Um, let's go ahead and take attendance. Uh, Maura Garrick?
Present.
Jim Bohan?
Present.
Jim Bohan is present?
Present.
Okay, Jim Acmando?
Present.
Okay, and I'm Rosina Negron. Um, absent today are George Clark, Art Gravannes, Greg Valente, and Darren Raymond Locke, which will be joining in a few minutes. Um. Let's see, this is a pre-application discussion for Patricia Branded, One Church Street, Southport, Connecticut, 06890, for a property located at One Church Street in Southport, Connecticut. Do we have someone here um to present this discussion?
That would be me, Patricia Brandt. Nice to meet you all. We will be moving to Southport shortly. And, you know, purchase a home at One Church Street and uh look forward to moving there. Um, and as I mentioned, or as I applied for the commission, there is a separate structure on the property, two separate structures, one being a three-car garage. Uh, it's a stone structure. Um, we believe it was the part of the original um development on that property dating back to 1835. And uh, the current, it has three garage doors with glass. I submitted a picture. I can uh show a picture of them if that would be helpful. And they are, the hu- the house was turned into a residence in the 1960s, we were told. So we believe these doors are actually as old as the 1960s. Uh, they certainly look that way. Um, so they have never been repaired there. I'm gonna try to put up a picture that maybe you can see.
Let me go ahead and share your
Oh, that would be fantastic, my pictures, yep. That would be great. At the bottoms of the doors, the garage unfortunately does not get a lot of sun. There's two large trees that um give it a lot of shade. So you could see that the bottom of the doors are um basically rotted out. If you look closely, the entire bottom of the doors are um rotted. They're, the water gets into the structure because of that. Um, we did put a new roof on uh, again, that was approved by the commission. Um, we have a new roof on that building and in fact, it was so in such disrepair that there was an entire hole in the back of the uh roof. And um, it did damage some of the uh stone structure, but that has been repaired as well when the roof was repaired. And now we are looking to replace those doors with newer doors. Um, you know, I drove, spent a lot, very, a good amount of time driving around Southport, looking at other people's garage doors and trying to get a feel for the uh, you know, keeping with the feel of the area and the current, you know, faith, trying to be faithful to the current design, but trying to update a little bit. And so this picture that is up there now are the doors that we would like to have um put in. And as the application also shows, they're, they're from Ed's Garage Doors, which is a uh company that's been around for 40 years in Norwalk. And they actually recommended and said it's done quite um often in these areas and especially with the condition of that structure. They recommended using metal doors, which now, I know, you know, in the past, metal doors, you think of the old, you know, kind of ugly metal-looking ones, but these are now constructed. Um, it's basically kind of compressed metal. Uh, it's similar to doors that they use in the interior of homes now, and it's just a way of making them more durable and less um less susceptible to poor weather conditions. And frankly, like the maintenance of having them painted all the time. They are painted, so when the doors get to um the garage place in Norwalk, they are actually painted on-site and um installed. So um, you know, again, that is what we are proposing to do to that structure. Because we just feel that the current doors are very, are in, you know, horrific condition that would be really not be possible to repair them. Satisfactory.
Okay, thank you. Um, is, are there any questions or any discussion? Maura?
So, I totally understand why you're replacing the doors. It makes complete sense. Um, and also understand why um Ed or Ed's representative is suggesting metal. However, as a rule of thumb um for the historic district, while they've come a long way of making replacement parts closer to looking to wood, they still don't have the same look as wood and the Historic District Handbook generally looks for things to be replaced with wood or natural um natural components unless there is a very strong reason why it cannot. So um, you know, that was one of the things when I saw your application originally, didn't want to just say no, but needed to know if there was a really compelling reason why they couldn't be wood.
Yeah, I mean, so again, the compelling reason for us is the, you know, nature of the structure. Since it's a so- stone structure, um, you know, again, I'm happy to give a tour of the structure. It's um, the grant, the uh interior, it just doesn't get really any sun. It's quite damp in there. And um, when the garage people came out to look at it, you know, they had strongly recommended not doing wood because they said it would just be a constant um problem as far as, you know, the moisture in that area. And we don't anticipate replacing the floor of the garage anytime soon. Um, and obviously, the, you know, the exterior, the stone is, is what it is. Obviously, we wouldn't be doing that either, but even having replace the um roof with the cedar, it's just, doesn't seem viable to, to do the wood doors. Um, obviously, if it's a restriction that we have to comply with, that would, we would have to do it. Um, I don't think we'd be doing it anytime soon, to be honest, because um just our budget won't allow it. And I know that's not a consideration of the um commission, but um we feel that this would be a much better visually appealing look for the garage than what is currently there.
Yeah, and just, just, just so you understand, I mean, and, and we hear you, it's just this, this comes up quite frequently, you know, people wanting to do synthetic fences because they last longer, people wanting to do um synthetic wrapped windows because they last longer. So don't take it personally, but this is just requirements. I have no further questions, Rosina.
Thank you. Jim Bohan?
Um, Patricia, first of all, welcome to Southport.
You're muted.
Thank you.
I can hear him.
I can hear him.
Yep.
Thank you, Jim.
Um. It's a wonderful village. Um. Is this visible from the road?
Um, I, I think I've submitted some pictures too. It's not directly, it's somewhat visible from the road. The actual garage structure sits sideways um on the driveway, almost uh the driveway comes up and then the garage is to the left. So it's more facing the um, the neighbors versus facing the actual road. But parts of it are visible if you look. Did I submit pictures, Rosina? I think I did.
Um, no, not with this one that I have.
Yeah, I, I, I couldn't make out if it was the, the, the church tree.
Okay, sorry, let me.
It's, 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 it's visible from Rose Hill, Jim.
More from Rose Hill at a distance, yeah. Yep, that's correct. It's not visible from Church Street.
And did you
Or the bottom of our driveway.
Did you say that roof is a cedar roof?
It is a cedar roof. That's a new cedar roof that we just put on.
Mm-hmm.
Looks lovely.
Um, and even that, you know, wasn't quite uh disrepair because again, it was covered in moss and um the entire backside of it had a hole in it from just, you know, the weather conditions. It just doesn't get enough. I don't think they maintained it either, unfortunately.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Jim A?
So my comments are the same as Maura's. Um, but I also have a question. Um, I'm looking at uh the first floor map on the um, on the virtually like a Zillow Redfin um website. They got 39 pictures of your home. Um, it actually features four-car garage, a three-car freestanding building and then a eight-by-12 or a 10-by-12 garage within the house. Is that, is that no longer there so that you don't need to replace those doors or?
No, that garage is still there. It's attached to the right side of the home and that door is fine. It's, you know, it's again, it's in a different, it's part of the regular house, so it doesn't have the stone um moisture and it's
Do these three proposed doors match that fourth door or the other door that's actually in the property itself?
No, the, actually, the door that's in the property itself um has no windows. I think it was added um probably in the 70s. Uh, because they added that side of the house, but no, it's, it's actually a completely different door. It does not match. And we, and we are not anticipating replacing that anytime soon. Um, because it does, that one is okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
And Darren, do you have any questions or comments? I know you came a little bit later than um the presentation, but it's the same presentation that we reviewed. So feel free to make any comments if you have. You're unmuted. Mute, mute.
Sorry. I do have a couple of questions and I'm sorry if they were asked. I got stuck in traffic coming home.
That's okay, no worries.
So just, I, I know people were just talking that the garage is visible from Rose Hill. How much of it is visible from Rose Hill and what part of it is visible from Rose Hill? I'm having trouble pulling it up on Google review.
Okay, I'm, I'm trying to locate the pictures that I had submitted and taken. Um, so again, it's not visible from like Church Street where our mailbox is. It's, well, it's not, that it's not visible, just the side where the stone is. Um, and then the garage doors are No, you really can't see them from, because it, the way it's situated on the property. Um, I'm sorry, I'm looking for the pictures. So it's basically, you can see it at a distance from Rose Hill. Rose Hill is, there's trees, um our neighbors on Rose Hill. I'm not sure, I can't remember their names. Um, they actually planted trees as boundaries um between our two properties. So those trees are somewhat blocking the vision, the um visual of our garage doors. Um. Okay, here, I did find it, actually. Okay, so again, I hope you can see this. So this is a picture from Church Street. Are you guys able to see that at all?
No, it's very tiny. So Darren, Darren, you can, you, you can see the whole thing, Darren, from Rose Hill. Okay, I'm trying to get a picture up on. Okay. Alright.
Alright, here's a picture. Um, that's not good.
So, right here?
This is a picture from Rose Hill.
Okay. No, that's, that's, that's Church Street.
No, that's Rose Hill. Cause that's, their house is on Rose Hill.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at what Rosina just put up.
Oh, okay, yes, that's Church Street. So that's our driveway there on the right.
In the picture that I put up, you can see, kind of like in the corner where the garage is located. So when you are on Rose Hill, you can see the whole thing. Especially as we do not take into consideration any landscape.
Okay. Alright, and then um in terms of the, the wood doors, I know the application, you want to completely replace them. Um, are they fixable at all or are they completely like beyond repair?
They're beyond repair. They're uh totally rotted out on the bottom and so, so much so that again, water is getting in the garage. Um, there are no automatic um door uh automatic openers on them because, you know, they're just, they're not capable of doing that, so.
And, and those have been there since the 60s, right?
That's what we, that's what they figure. Um, you know, there's really no records of that, but it would appear that they, from the condition of the entire home, that really nothing was updated since the 60s or 70s when it the, the part of the back of the house was added in the 70s from what we can find out. But the house was converted into a residence in the 60s and it does not, it did not appear that anything has changed since then.
Okay, so those doors have lasted 55
Mm-hmm.
years.
Mm-hmm.
And Rosina, do you know offhand what, when this district was designated?
I do not.
I think, I think it's part of the original, the, the, the one that's the Southport. Because Rose, Rose Hill is the line except it goes up to Church Street and includes those, uh, that house. Yeah.
Yeah, there's actually a, um, on a picture of Rose Hill and Church in the wintertime where the landscape doesn't block it and you can, you can see the three bays. Just zoom in, just FYI.
Okay, those are all my questions, I guess.
Okay, thank you. And my questions were similar to the ones that have been um asked so far. My biggest concern is the material because it is not a natural material. Um. Most of the houses that are in the historic districts usually have replaced with um in-kind. So it's, that, that is my biggest concern.
Okay.
I um. It's an interesting thing. Normally when we have a materials issue, it's a material pretending to be something else. A polymer pretending to be wood. That offers a lot of preservation, maintenance damages. But this is the case of a metal door. Appearing to be a metal door. And I see nothing offensive about metal doors. It's not pretending to be something else.
But unfortunately, Jim, it's not historically done. If it was, if metal doors had been part of that period, I think we could make that case, but I don't think it's, it fits from the historic standpoint, but I would defer to those who know better than me.
Alright. I don't think. When was the house built, Patricia?
Eighteen thirty.
Eighteen thirty-five, I believe, I believe.
I'm not sure when metal garage doors started being built, but
20th century.
We had to have cars first.
I remember being we were trapped by basketball hoops down on Old, Old South Road. I looked up, when, when was basketball invented? Sometime in the 1850s. It's, it's okay. Um. I just
So it really is the, the material and not the um, you know, the design or the look, it's
Yeah, it, it seems to be purely a material thing and it's it's something that I've had difficulty with. I mean, we went to great sacrifice to keep everything wood in our house, as, as did many, many people. But I I would have to think hard to vote against this.
Do we know when the garage was built? I can't seem to find.
Um. No, honestly, that, you know, when we were looking into purchasing it, um, the home, mm-hmm. There were really, you know, no records. Um, you know, we went to the uh building department and they, you know, there were, there were no records in existence.
I remember.
It could have, I'm, I'm not 100% sure, but it could have been part of the house next door.
It was a carriage house.
Like, a carriage house to that property.
Yes, so that's what we were told.
I'm all of a sudden reminded of the motion picture Sabrina with Audrey Hepburn and Audrey Bolder. And a lot of the scenes in Sabrina were filmed on a Long Island estate. I think it was one of the uh, the Grace Estates down on Long Island. And it was 20th century, but that, that big three-bay garage in Sabrina had metal doors. And they sounded great. It's the sound of the, of metal doors. Anyway, I, I, I would have difficulty voting against it.
Okay, um, George Clark joined a little while ago and he has a comment, I believe.
Hi, George.
You're muted.
I think you're muted, George.
You're still muted. We still cannot hear you.
George, do you want to go out and come back in and make sure that it's turning your microphone on?
We'll wait for George. Anyone else has any other comments or questions?
Try to unmute now, George.
We can not hear you, no. You can type your question. We cannot hear you.
So just for reference while we're waiting for George. Um, this district was designated in 1967. It was expanded three times. Um, so there was a boundary revision in 1994 and the boundary was extended eastward. In 2007, Spruce Street was added. And in 2010, places like Church Street, Kingsley Drive, et cetera, were added. So this is a relatively new addition to the district. Um. I'd have to read through and, and see what the justifications for all the previous boundaries were and, and why they weren't extended. It could be, you know, homeowner specifically driven, but this is National Register as well. Um. That building's present on the 1934 aerial, so obviously it's, it's at least 100 years old. Um, so just for reference.
Thank you.
George, you're still muted, I think.
You're, you're muted.
We can't hear you.
So. You can type the message and we can read it.
You can call in too. And Patricia, just while we're waiting and because I, I came in late again, so please forgive me, I'm so sorry.
No, it's fine.
Um, so there are wood doors, you want to replace them. Can you go through the material once again? They're cladded or are they solid aluminum? Are they?
Um. They're not solid aluminum. I believe they're pressed is what they told us and then they get painted on-site.
Pressed, okay. Thank you, Rosina.
And I've had a chance to go through, I mean, overhead garage door has the exact garage door that you're proposing in wood. If, you know, you needed a place to go to, I'm sure these folks have that exact door in wood as well.
Mm-hmm. Yep. I, again, I, you know, we were partly doing it, um, well, a good partly reason doing it because again, of the condition of the roof and the garage door, people recommended it because of the kind of like the slope of the garage, as I said, it's being that it's stone, it just is very um moist and
Yeah.
you know, again, the trees that are over it, you know, just shadow it so much. So the maintenance would be difficult, but.
Patricia, you mentioned that the your house, the house you bought, was originally, had, originally, it was not a house. Was it an outbuilding for the one, the uh, the Rose Hill Road Estate?
Uh, the, the one next door, yes, it was a carriage house. There apparently was a manure pit in the backyard, so it was literally a carriage house for the um horses and they look like there were rooms up above.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, anyone else has any other comments or questions?
Hello?
Oh, for you, Patricia? Oh, hold on. George is here. Go ahead, George.
Yeah, welcome. I'm sorry.
You need to mute your computer.
I just did, I thought. There it goes. Okay, hi. Good afternoon. I'm sorry, I was actually at the house. I, I was in your driveway.
Oh, no.
So I, I was, I was virtually
I could have given you a tour.
Uh, yeah, well, I saw the lights on, but I decided that uh, I wasn't sure which, you're the house behind the garage, right?
Um, it's, yeah, it's basically the circular driveway. It's, yeah, it's a house there.
Yeah, I was there, so uh
We're not living there yet. We're not living there yet.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, so, yeah, it's a, it's a beautiful home, it's the, both of them, the, the whole, the whole area is spectacular. Um, the, the concern that I have and, and I think everybody's is that I don't, I hate to set a precedent of saying, well, in this condition, we accept this, but in this condition, we accept that, because that's a tricky road to go down. Um, but I do understand you're in the shade and you're, you're really it's, it's a, it seems to be a moist area with that, way that, that grade goes, so I can understand that the damage to the, to the doors. And I, and I, I did, I think I was looking at the doors that, they look, they look like they've, they've seen their many better days. Uh, so I think your application is right in time to, time to probably do a replacement program. Um, but I, I think, I think I, I would I would rather see you try and, try and stay with materials that are less challenging to the HDC, because it presents multiple um, landmines in the future. I guess that's my comment.
Yeah. And I'm just gonna add to what George is saying, because I'm sitting here thinking about it. Patricia, the hardest part is, because of the George's point of precedent, the fact that it, while, while difficult, this one did last for over fifty-five years. So it would be hard for us to say to other applicants that this was an extra, a truly extraordinary situation. In my book, that's my vote, I mean, I just, that's, I'm just being frank, because I do think it opens up the door for us with many circumstances. And I can just see the faces of other people that we've told had to follow form.
We actually had a house across the street from me, we made them take the doors away and put new doors on, because they went with uh, oppressed material. So. So I'm sensitive to, to, to what we did to a, a neighbor on Old South.
Okay.
Okay. Um, do you have any other questions Patricia?
I don't know, so um is this the, the final vote of tonight, or is it in December that the?
We're not voting at this moment, um, this was just a discussion, if you want to come back um into the December meeting, just because you we are gonna include you in um, the public notice, because you have all the documentation. But, just um, based on our comments tonight, you'll be able to assess if you wanna revise your application or present as is.
Okay.
Um. I'm going back and forth in my head about, about stuff, it's just the doors, I'm sorry. It, the, the, the surrounds of the doors, are those getting replaced?
No, those were already, um, that wood was already replaced, that was in the application with the repair to the um the replacement of the roof. They needed to put the, so those white boards above, those have already been um, replaced. That needed to be done when the roof was done. Yeah, so if you see in that picture.
Yeah, how about the verticals, those were replaced?
Not the, just uh
Just the top?
Just the top, yeah, yeah.
And are the verticals getting replaced?
Kind of see it. Um. We hadn't thought about that, but you know, we certainly can.
But those aren't showing signs of rot.
No, those are as well. Those were painted, when they um, did the upper things, they painted those, struck those pieces.
Mm-hmm.
But we didn't have them paint, we didn't have them paint the doors, because again, we were hoping to replace them. And no, no trim was painted yet either. Again, I think that was approved when the um, replacement of the roof was, but we haven't gone forward with that yet, we're waiting to see.
Yeah, so I guess in my head, I, I, I kind of oscillate on this one for a couple of reasons, one I'd have to look at the, the district a little bit more closely, but it looks like you were a late addition to the district and I'm just looking at the structure of what this building is, I, I, I feel fairly confident that it was retrofitted to be a garage. So it's not functioning as it was originally meant to function. Um, and it was a late addition, um, I also know that stone buildings are particularly difficult um in terms of, of what's happening to them from a preservation standpoint, because we're having different weather patterns than we were when they were first built. Um, so, you know, in, in the work that I do, I've seen a lot more degradation with things like water and a lot more dampness and we're getting more, you know significant cycles of, of wet weather, weather patterns than we would usually have had and would have had at the time that they were built. So I, unlike some of the other members of, of this commission, I, I see an argument both ways. Um. So I, I, I guess I'm saying this because I, I understand where you're coming from and, and you know, it is a prob, wood can be a problem, especially in damp conditions, and you're on a hill too, which doesn't, doesn't necessarily help either.
So, thank you to everyone, if there are any last comments or questions. Um, let's discuss, otherwise, um, we'll see the app.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, um, I was just saying if there were any other additional questions or comments, um otherwise, I think we've expressed, I think, um what the commissioners had thoughts about, so you have the decision now to continue the application as is or um, provide an amendment depending on what you want and um we'll have a formal discussion in December if um you continue with the application.
Okay. Um, and can I offer to anybody to, if they wanted to come and actually again, see you know, the interior and see the structure that it's, you know, quite unfortunately um damp and, you know, it's just the nature of the um, the stone structure itself, but I'm happy to show it to anybody if they were in the area and wanted to see it.
What's, what's your timeline for, for changing these, is it an immediate thing, or at this point are you waiting to spring to change them out?
No, I mean, we had hoped to do it, uh, again, because um
Right.
They, they can't accommodate, because of the weather and they can't accommodate openers. So right now, you know, it's a matter of getting out and opening them manually and that's not easy either, because again, they're just so old, but um, so I don't know, but then ordering doors is uh, uh twelve weeks, so.
Okay, so the other alternative is you can, if, should you want to and should you not feel comfortable moving ahead with an application in December, you can withdraw the application and look into some of the suggestions that the other commissioners have made and come back for another pre-application anytime. And then, you know, get a new set of discussions going, if you look at wood doors and they're feasible, or if, if you present that there are these different options, whatever, we can review it again and then you can come forward with a, a, another after that pre-application with the actual um application, uh, I wouldn't mind stopping by and actually looking at the structure if it's okay with you. Obviously, I'll reach out to you before I do that, because I don't like blocking on people's property without their consent. But I think it would be helpful to actually go and look at them.
Patricia, can I ask one last?
Question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Um, if you go forward with wood doors, wouldn't this be treated as a repair? Since you're not changing anything, you're replacing wood with wood and moving on?
Um, I think
The designs change it.
I know, it's not a design change, if you but, there, the doors that are there are wood and they're panel doors, they make the same doors that, today. She, you could, you could replace them wood for wood, that would just be a repair order, right?
If they were identical, I, I believe, but we were hoping to change the style of them a little bit.
Uh, that's another, another, I, I'm just, I'm trying to get you to a, a more comfortable but easier place. If, 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 because of, that's, that's all I was thinking about.
And Patricia, one last question, what, what is the, what type of wood was used for the doors previously, do you know? Was it cedar or mahogany?
Um, I honestly don't know, I don't believe mahogany, um, I, I don't, I, but I don't know, I shouldn't speak to that, because I don't really know, honestly.
Yeah, yeah, I'd love to look, I, I, you know, Patricia, you if, if I wanted to go by there tomorrow morning sometime, would that be alright, are you, are you there, is that, is it an inconvenience?
Um. I, tomorrow morning, I'm not there, but I will be there in the afternoon, is it possible to come by in the afternoon? Okay, um, I can provide my cellphone also if wanted to call before, just to make sure.
I, I can share it with um, the commissioners.
Thank you.
Because you're, you're literally, you're literally two minutes from my house, maybe a minute and a half, so it, it's no problem, I I, I'm not sure, I, I did, when I was looking at the doors just a, a little while ago, I didn't think they were maybe quite as old as that, but and, and, and that might I make it if the diff, if the doors were newer and they, and they, and they, and they failed quicker, it wouldn't, it would make a, a point of suggesting that something other than wood would be a, you know, would, would be an exception, but um, but I, I'd like to take a look on them. So tomorrow, if you, you know, two, 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 three o'clock, and if you, if I get your number from Regina, I'll give you a call.
Great.
Okay, cool.
George, I, I'd like to join you.
You want me to pick you up?
Yeah.
I was gonna come by around that time too, but I will not, so it's not a meeting.
Yes, okay, okay, um, well we should, we can work with you with, if, I don't want to, you've got a much longer distance. If you wanna, Darren, if you wanna go and we could, we could go earlier or later.
No, it's fine. If you all are there at the same time, just go two at a time. There's no meeting, there's no discussion between anyone.
Patricia, if there's three of us on site, it constitutes a meeting, and if it's not legally noticed, we can get sued, so we're trying to
We would have an unofficial official problem meeting, we don't want that.
That would cause me a gigantic headache.
But we can walk, we can walk two by, we can walk two by two, I got it.
Um, so I
Can you do one thing?
I will be sharing your information. I will be sharing your information with the commissioners that attended today. Um, so that those that are able to attend tomorrow can go tomorrow, I'm unable to do tomorrow, but will be in touch. And will move forward with um something that works for everyone, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Rosina.
Thank you so much.
That's wonderful.
It is six forty-seven, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
And I'll second it.
And Jim, will you call me?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
The meeting has finished, thanks.
Bye.
Bye.
Thank you now.